Good evening. I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order on the 16th day of May. Just a reminder, there is a severe thunderstorm in the area. If we have to evacuate, we'll all cram into the bathrooms in these buildings here, these rooms that are reinforced. So, just in case that happens. Please stand for -- who has the invocation? Do you? Okay. Please stand for the invocation and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for this day. We give thanks for the opportunity to come together to do the business of the citizens of Lee County. We ask for the blessing upon this board, our citizens, as well as our staff, our law enforcement, and our firefighters, and our emergency medical personnel, as they go about their daily business to take care of the people of Lee County. In your most holy and precious name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You have your agenda in front of you. Are there any additional items on -- excuse me. Before I go, I have some noted changes. There is an additional item on the consent agenda, and it is in regards to the acceptance of Internet crimes against children grant to the sheriff's offices and local law enforcement agencies in the amount of seven hundred -- excuse me, $74,962,000. And we're going to add that to the consent agenda. And for the old business, item six -- excuse me. Item 4B zoning map application for property located off Steel Bridge Road. We will remove that from the agenda. And we'll make the zoning map amendment application for Buckhorn Road as item B under old business. Any other additional items?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to add under five I discussion of nonprofit policy.
We're adding under section five I discussion of the nonprofits' policy. Any other changes, additions? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to public comments. We have five individuals wishing to speak. Just a reminder, please, when you come to the -- oh, okay. I don't need to read that email. Please come to the microphone. Please state your name and your address for the clerk. You have three minutes to discuss whatever your topic is. And the first individual on the agenda is Mr. John Kirkman.
My name is John Kirkman. I reside at 3307 English Circle here in Sanford. I wish to comment about the request to rezone a portion of Buckhorn Road, the 216 acres that were discussed at the last meeting at the workers' center. I had the opportunity to hear the developers' reasons why they thought there ought to be greater density allowed at that site. And then I heard the neighbors register the reasons why they thought there should not be greater density. I had an opportunity to talk to some of those neighbors afterwards, and it was only after the meeting that I learned that the county staff is recommending against allowing the greater density. And I stand before you tonight asking you, as our Board of Commissioners, to deny the request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. And I'll be brief. I'm just here to encourage you to fund the war memorial for our veterans in Broadway. I'd like to see us do all we can for our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next individual on the public comments is Michael Blakely. Oh, and a reminder, please, when you come forward, state your name and your address.
I'm Michael Blakely with J. Thomas Engineering, 143 Charlotte Avenue, Suite 104, Sanford, NC 27330. And basically, what I'm speaking about tonight was to remind the Commissioners that we are here and to answer any questions once the appropriate time looking at the Buckhorn subdivision case. Wanted to take this opportunity to give you guys a little more insight in the discussion that we had with the planning board. I know that y'all kind of get Cliff Notes on that or not privy to the actual conversation. And what we spoke with the planning board about was we reiterated what we had in our presentation about what we were asking for was far below what could be allowed in the RR density. The current RA density is .5 dwellings per unit, and that's per the land use plan. And what we have proposed is .6 dwellings per unit. So we're just asking for a little bit extra in order to utilize the soils that are available. The lot sizes will look the same from the street. They're all 100-foot wide lots, same setbacks for RA. We're proposing 132 lots, and we feel like the density that we are offering is slightly larger but not extreme. And we're providing 75 acres of open space of the 216 acres. So we're not utilizing the entire property. We're preserving, trying to keep that rural agricultural timber-type feel, but utilize what soils were available on the site to the maximum to use that usable land. Everything on that site is pretty hilly, and everything that is uphill is what we have developed. Everything next to the streams and wetlands are all left with substantial buffers, over 50-foot buffers. We only have one stream crossing, and that is per the UDO requirements for interconnectivity and cul-de-sacs. So what we're trying to do is keep this as green as possible. And we wanted to reiterate to you guys, we brought these points forward to the planning board, and they felt like that the reason why we had the staff not approval was because we were not meeting the land use plan. The details of our design were in -- went along with the UDO, however--
Time, sir.
Got you. I knew I was getting close. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Our next individual is Lloyd Smith.
Hello, Board. My name is Lloyd Smith. I reside at 788 Holt Road here in Sanford. Thank you for your time. I'll be brief. I hope you have in front of you a petition signed by 90 individuals from the town of Broadway who live along Buckhorn Road. See some nodding heads? I hope you have it there. This is testimony from the people, and you heard from the first gentleman about Buckhorn Road, that this is an idea that we know is coming, but we would like to reflect the people's wants and needs for this area. A vast rural area, traditionally farmland. I have a farm there, and it's been in my family for over 90 years. So I would like to see good, solid development with a plan in place. We elect you Commissioners to do the right thing that the people would like to see happen. And this testimony here that I have in front of you and that you have before you now should show you what the county and the people in that area would like to see happen. We understand development is coming. We understand people have to have a place to live. We also need to have a plan in place for the future for our children and people that have lived along that area and that road for many, many years. And understand that change is coming, but please consider the change that you're thinking about and hopefully make the right decisions for the future. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the -- or excuse me. The next individual on the list here is H.L. Montague. Did I get that correctly?
Good afternoon. H.L. Montague, 1205 Valley House Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm a developer with -- this working on the Buckhorn project. As Mr. Blakely, the engineer, was mentioning earlier, we're asking for 24 more lots going from 108 to 132. We hope you do understand that we are leaving X amount of space for wildlife, and there are some roads in there to make it look unloaded so it will have the countryside feel to it. Development's going to happen. It's just a matter of, you know, how many lots we can get. But we do feel that what we're asking is not to cram a bunch of homes in a tight area. You know, if we were to wait five years for sewer, this project could have over 300 homes on it. So we're just asking for just a tad bit more, just to use the good soils, because we know that some of the soils in Lee County are not suitable for septic and that it will have to have sewer eventually. That's all we have at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next individual on the list, Jacob Smith. And for the record, I'm not related to any of the Smiths. Well, I'm sorry. I have his le -- I have his email in front of me. My fault.
Chairman, can I speak for him if you don't have his email?
I have his email in front of me. I'm sorry. This is Jacob Smith, 232 Pottery Lane, Sanford, North Carolina. The rezoning of the 216-acre plot of land located on Buckhorn Road is of great concern to many residents in the local area. Not only will the density of the development cause a tremendous shift of the local culture, but it will also have far-reaching consequences for the wildlife that lives in that area. This includes various songbird species as well as eastern turkey population, which has been on decline in recent years. Along with the destruction of animal habitat, the developer has stated that the property is all inward draining and that the wetlands located towards the bottom of the property will not be affected by a dense cluster of type housing development. However, this area has no storm sewer runoff system. Any large amount of rain will cause runoff that the area is not accustomed to, which will bring various human items such as vehicle fluids to litter into the Cape Fear watershed. Unfortunately, the American wetland is a fragile ecosystem that continues to disappear or be changed by urban development. Thirdly, the suitable soils on this tract of land for septic systems are very limited. The majority of the center of this property is not developable according to the site plan. And the individual plots that have been proposed are so densely packed that some properties would have only access to extremely small septic areas. Along with that, the property is completely surrounded by residential agricultural lots, and 130 homes would be very much out of place in this area. And in spite of the attendance of these meetings, I know many people in Lee County are against the development of more subdivisions. It was even said in the original document that the plan does not conform to Plan San Lee. According to the planning board's staff, I urge the board to consider not allowing the development of this site for both the good of the land and the people of the county. And again, Jacob Smith. That concludes public comments. Moving on to question?
I was moving this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Moving on to old business. We have the approved changes to the UDO and the Code of Ordinances based on Senate Bill 300.
Correct. That would be me. So as you recall, Senate Bill 300 was amended back in December of 2021, and it amends North Carolina General Statute 153A-123, which regulates the enforcement of local government ordinances. Before the amendments went into effect, by default, a violation of a county ordinance was punishable by a criminal penalty unless the ordinance stated otherwise. And Senate Bill 300 now requires punishment of a county ordinance only if the ordinance specifically allows for the penalty. The amendment also specifically listed offenses that local governments are prohibited from criminalizing and allows for a defense of the ordinance if the ordinance criminal violation were to go to district court. And according to the UDO, we also had to amend the ordinance because there were certain violations that we could no longer criminalize. We did hold our public hearing at the April 18, 2022 meeting. The planning board did vote to recommend the proposed changes to the UDO, and so now both of these are brought back in front of the board for final approval. I would be requesting two votes, and we could take the ordinance amending certain sections of the Lee County UDO to comply with Session Law 2021-138 for a first vote, if the board would like to.
I trust that everybody had an opportunity to review all the changes to the UDO. Is there any questions of Ms. Parrish?
I move that we approve the UDO to comply.
Motion's been made to approve the changes to the UDO and Court of Ordinances based on Senate Bill 300 as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And then we would just need a vote to approve the changes to the Code of Ordinances.
Motion's been made to approve the changes to the Code of Ordinances as specified under Senate Bill 300. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next item on the agenda is the zoning map amendment for rezoning application for 216.18 acres located off Buckhorn Road from residential RA to residential restricted conditional zoning district, RRC. And Ms. Amy McNeil is here.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff.
Sorry. Would the Board Chair mind if I just address the conflict of interest before Ms. McNeil begins?
Yes, please. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Just to -- so that we're in compliance with 160D-109, I just want to address this with the board to make sure no board member has a conflict of interest in which we need to ask for a recusal. A governing board member shall not vote on a legislative decision regarding a development regulation adopted pursuant to this chapter where the outcome is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, or readily identifiable financial impact on the member. A governing board member shall not vote on any zoning amendment if the landowner of the property, subject to a rezoning petition, or the applicant for a tax amendment is a person with whom the member has a close familial business or associational relationship.
For the record, I'm not related to any of the Smiths.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there anyone else here who has any conflict of interest in this proceeding?
No.
No.
Okay. You are ready.
Yes, sir. For the benefit of everyone in the audience, I'm Amy McNeil, the zoning administrator for the Sanford Lee County Community Development Department. Regarding the application by J. Thomas Engineering to rezone a vacant 216-acre tract of land with frontage on Buckhorn Road from residential agricultural to residential restricted conditional zoning district to allow the development of a residential single-family home subdivision with a minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet as per the design illustrated on the plan submitted with the rezoning application, the planning board met on April 18 after the public hearing was held and voted unanimously to recommend that the Commissioners approve the proposed zoning map amendment with the condition that all the lots must have the minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet as per the design illustrated on the plan submitted with the rezoning application. Lots 128, 129, and 130 will need to be redesigned to comply with this requirement. The board acknowledged that the proposed zoning map amendment is not consistent with the Plan San Lee Long Range Plan designation of countryside. However, the proposed subdivision plan appeared to take into consideration the existing conditions while allowing for reasonable development. As a reminder, the Commissioners should make two votes regarding this matter. Sample motions are provided for your reference, and I've placed those at your seats this evening. The board is always welcome to draft a unique motion if preferred. Also, the board may acknowledge that the zoning map amendment is not consistent with the Plan San Lee Long Range Plan and still vote to approve the request. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions of Ms. McNeil? Seeing there are none, do I hear a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that the proposed zoning map amendment is not consistent with the Plan San Lee Long Range Plan designation of countryside because the request is for a zoning district that allows a density that exceeds what is currently allowed or is proposed to be allowed for future development.
Motion's been made that the proposed zoning map amendment is not consistent with the Plan San Lee Long Range Plan designation. Any questions? Any discussion? Seeing there are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And next, I make a motion that the Board of Commissioners deny the rezoning request because the subdivision design submitted as part of the conditional rezoning does not appear to be appropriate for the site or in harmony with the area.
Motion's been made that the Planning Board recommended that the Board of Commissioners deny the rezoning request because the subdivision design submitted as part of the conditional rezoning does not appear to be appropriate for the site. Any questions? Any discussion? Seeing there are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda under new business is approved resolution calling for a public hearing in connection with the financing and the purchase of the property located at 115 Chatham Street, known as the Buggy Factory.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, I'll take the first one. The county is considering purchasing the Buggy Factory located at 115 Chatham Street for the appraised value of $5,125,000. The county intends to end into an installment financing agreement with the Sanford Buggy Building LLC, aka Progressive Contractors, in which the county will pay $1.5 million at closing and the remaining purchase price of $3,625,000 over 48 months with 0% interest. So we are asking the board to pass this resolution, which would call for a public hearing on the financing to be held June 6, 2022.
Motion's been made to approve the resolution calling for a public hearing in connection with the financing and the purchase of the property located at 115 Chatham Street, known as the Buggy Factory. Any discussion? No questions of the manager? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And is that public hearing going to be at our next board meeting?
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is approved modification to the interlocal agreement for the shared use of the Buggy Factory.
Let me do that. Okay.
Yes.
So, since 2014, the county and the city in Saga have leased space from Progressive Development Corporation at the Buggy Factory. And I did place on the agenda the original interlocal agreement for the shared use of the Buggy Factory, and then the -- I think there was amendment in 2015 for that shared use. As we move forward with potentially purchasing the Buggy Factory in order to keep the one-stop shop and for all organizations to continue to remain there, we drafted new modifications to the interlocal agreement for both Saga and for the city of Sanford to show their commitment of entering into a 10-year lease with a county. And then what we intend to do is, if this is passed tonight, I will have to submit notice for our intent to lease the property to both Saga and to the city of Sanford at the end of this week because we have to run a notification in the newspaper 30 days prior to approving it. And we would need to approve that lease at our June 20 meeting before we close on it by June 30. And then on top of that, we would also be asking the board to give the county manager the right to sign any leases that would be short-term leases, so a year or less. So at this time, what I'm asking for is approval of the modifications to the interlocal agreement, and then to give county staff authority to run those public notices for the leases that will be brought back in front of the board on June 20.
Any questions of Ms. Parrish or the manager regarding the interlocal agreement for shared use of the Buggy Factory?
Is the city on Saga on board still there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion's been made to approve--
Motion's been made to approve the modification to the interlocal agreement for shared use of the Buggy Factory. Any further discussion? Seeing there are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is recommended budget presentation for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Easier to do it from here so you can see what's behind you. All right. It's my pleasure to recommend to the board the 2022-23 budget. And I'll start out with the goals that the board discussed back in January. The number-one goal was lowering the property tax rate. Then we talked about following through on our commitment to our employees. The budget still addresses impacts from COVID-19, and then we have some capital project funding and debt service things to go over. Whoops, a little too fast. So the budget overview, there was $93,841,795 requested to get to the 3-cent decrease that I'm recommending. Had to cut out $2.68 million in requests. To fund all the requests would have required a 1.05-cent property tax rate increase above the current rate. So here's a -- this was in my transmitter letter as well, but it shows the average growth rate for the county's tax base. This past year, it grew at 5.20%, and over the last five years, it's grown at 4.17%. So our tax base is doing well. It helped quite a bit. The total recommended budget is $91,164,429. Last year's original budget was $83,880,842, or an increase of $7,283,587, or an increase of 8.68%. So here's the general fund summary comparison from fiscal year 2022 and fiscal year 2023. As you can see, the increase in the tax base, the reduction in the tax rate. But you can see, even with the reduction in the tax rate, we still had an increase in revenue, showing that good growth in our base. One penny now equals $662,353. We obviously had a lot of growth in our sales tax revenue, $18.89 million to 90 to 20-- We obviously had a lot of growth in our sales tax revenue, $18.89 million to 22.6 million. So our revenue changes, ad valorem taxes, revenue's up $695,265. The big number is the local option sales tax of $3,745,269. We had other revenue sources, increase of $678,658. Some of that was the rent that we'll be receiving at the Buggy Building, and then we had increase in fund balance appropriated. So expensive change of interest, this is by category, and I just put all that categories there that are within our budget. So general government up 400, by the way, all these numbers are up, none of them are down this year. So general government up 430,000, public safety, almost 1.5 million, economic and physical development, 450,000, health and welfare, a little over a million, education, mainly because of the community college, is up 1.6 million, culture and recreational, parks and recreation and library, really showing some participation increases. So their budgets are up 315,000, debt service up 518,000 to cover the debt service for the Buggy Building, and then contributing 1.4 million to reserves. So the significant items in the budget is the, you know, we've talked a lot about the COLA, also funding the pay plan, so some people will be getting 2.2% or 1.1% on top of the 4%. Retirement rate increased from the state, and as we discussed at our last meeting, our previous meeting, was increases in our health insurance. So the budget funds the reorganization of the administration and finance departments, new GIS specialist, an IT administration position, a drug agent in the sheriff's office, and two community resource deputies for the sheriff, and an environmental health program specialist. Also covers the debt service of the Buggy Building, and then, as we discussed earlier in the workshop, $920,000 to cover the Moore Center for next year through the community colleges budget. Whoop. Let me make sure I didn't go too fast. That's really touchy. So significant, I already went through that. So the upcoming budget process, so far, we've had budget workshops on May 9th and May 16th. We're scheduled this Friday at 9:00 a.m. to have a budget workshop, and then next Monday at 6 o'clock p.m. So next Monday, we have the schools and the community colleges, our big topics for next So on Monday, June 6th, we're scheduled for a public hearing, anytime after the public hearing and including that meeting, you can pass the budget, but we need to have it passed by June 30th, and our last meeting of the fiscal year is scheduled is June 20. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the county manager. Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
On Monday, the 6th, we just gonna do the public hearing and nothing else?
Unless there's other things you want to discuss on June 6th.
Oh, no, I'm fine with that.
It just depends on what happens at the next two workshops, I guess, you know? But so far, we haven't discussed a lot of changes, so.
That works for me, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, so your 4% COLA increases for all your county workers, right?
Yes, sir.
Full-time, part-time, or?
We'll be making adjustments to the part-time as well, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll be looking towards over a couple of years, trying to get, you know, most of the workers who are less than $15, up to $15 an hour. But we kind of had the same issue that the cooperative extension had, is all of a sudden if we push everybody up to 15, then we end up with compression, so we need to let 4% COLA run this year, and then finally, we're here, we should be all right.
Good, thank you.
I'm good.
Commissioner Lavalley, no question. Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver?
No.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
And it's in regards to this 1.3 million, when you say reserves, is that fund balance?
That is going to capital reserve.
Capital reserves?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we use capital reserve to help fund debt service as well, so, you know, we know we have the debt service coming up for the, the community college, the library, and the sports complex, so we upped how much we're putting in there to get us started so there won't be a tax rate impact on the debt for those projects.
No other questions? Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is recommend the capital improvement, recommended capital improvements program, and I believe the county manager's up again.
Mr. Chairman, I've got my notes at my desk there. All right, now we'll talk big numbers. So the presentation overview, we'll review the CIP, the total capital requested from all our departments and funding agencies, and then I'll go over what everybody's asking for and what we're trying to recommend in the five years. So as a reminder, our capital improvements plan are for projects exceeding $500,000. Our CIP is a five-year plan, and we prioritize projects plus funding plan and trying to put a funding plan in place for the higher priority projects. So the total capital request, administration, a little over, almost 30 million, education, Lee County Schools, 53 million, CCCC is at 10 million, community development, 60 million, human services, 577,000, public safety, 5.4 million. So you'll see as we go through, there's some different, you know, requests this year than in the past from some of the folks. So this is what the pie chart looks like, you know, kind of changing, normally, education is the highest percentage, but we're getting more and more active in trying to address the county operation needs as well. So the total recommended in the five years, administration, almost 2 million, education for Lee County Schools at the 53 million they requested, CCCC, they did some things differently in their $10 million request, so in our, in our recommendation, it's 7.6 million, plus the cost of the building that we purchased eventually, so it's kind of complicated. Community develop, 64 million, human services, $577,000, and public safety, 5.4 million. Just a little bar chart there. So in administration, projects are recommended to begin in fiscal year 24, 25, upgrade the fueling system that Mr. Spivey talked about in the budget workshop earlier. One of the things that would help us if we were to do this project right now is to have increased capacity, really has never been an issue until now with the price, and then the supply, and trying to keep fuel on site. So to remind the board, we provide fuel to some of the fire districts and to the schools, so it's not just our operations that we're helping with, especially with diesel. So there's a little picture of general services, you know, building and the expansion with all the little red dots there, so they would also like to address new vehicle wash, so they can wash vehicles there, the new fuel dispenser, addition of parking, they would like to have an entrance off of 7th Street instead of the one off of 5th Street, which is, can get kind of problematic with the train tracks there, so that was their idea. Lee County Schools, talked to a couple commissioners today about this request, and a phone call I got about the condition of West and East Lee Middle School. I'm gonna, I talked with the superintendent last week, and I think the two priority, the four priorities they have here with the Southern Lee High School, Lee County High School, and the two middle schools, West and East, it's been a while since we've toured schools. Maybe a good time for us to go and take a look and see, this summer, to see what the conditions are of the school after a long school year and a long period of COVID for a couple of years, and see what they're asking for in those projects, because, you know, some of the folks said that East and West are starting to show their age. So at Lee, Southern Lee High School, they're requesting an auditorium and four additional classrooms, their estimated cost is 5.8 million, they would actually like to start it in the coming fiscal year, but with the, the projects we have going on, that's probably not a possibility, but maybe able to get that started in fiscal year 24, 25. Same with the Lee County High School auditorium renovations, 4.2 million. Then the Wesley Middle School new gym and renovations, 5.46 million, they requested 23, 24, we're recommending 25, 26, which we may need, you know, once we take a look at the schools, that may change, same with East Lee, 5.46 million. Then they've had the new elementary school in there, and you can see they've upped the price of an elementary school. Elementary schools used to be in the 20 to 25 million range, and if you were to look, go on DPI website, and you were to take a look at some of the elementary schools lately and what they cost, 32.8 million might be a deal. So it's getting expensive. At CCCC, their big project is the UG Moore Manufacturing Biotech Solutions Center, otherwise known as the Moore Center, which we're beginning in this year, and we'll be talking with them about when the Lee Early College and the library there will begin, because we need to borrow the money for all those projects at the same time, so they really should be getting started on those as well. Community development, Lee County Library Expansion, OT Sloan Park and Recreation Center, Kiwanis Children's Park Place, Phase II, Temple Park, Phase II, and then the multi-sports complex are all in this area. The library expansion, 18 million, starting where we're already started, but construction and borrowing should hopefully start in the next fiscal year. OT Sloan Park and Recreation Center, still working on, on that, but sometime out in the future, hopefully we'll have an indoor rec center. Kiwanis Children's Park, Phase II, we have grant funding, and the board funded the match, so that project will start in the coming fiscal year. Temple Park, the board funded these improvements as well, so we'll be starting in the coming fiscal year, and the multi-sports complex, which we've started, and hopefully, construction will start in fiscal year 22, 23. Human services, requesting an animal shelter expansion, I've pushed that, I keep pushing that out, it's one of those things where we have a low euthanasia rate right now, so it's not real sure why we were expanding that shelter, so still evaluating the need for that, so I keep pushing that expansion out. The building is already constructed to be expanded, it's, so it would probably, nothing's simple and inexpensive these days, but it's probably about as simple in expenses as you're gonna get. And then we've been talking with our fire departments and emergency management, EMS, and the sheriff about upgrading to the Viper system, otherwise known as the 800 megahertz system. Most of the jurisdictions around us are making the jump or have made the jump, and the price tag on that is not cheap for us, it's around 5.44 million dollars. So the public hearing on the CIP is also scheduled for June 6th, and if the board needs to meet and discuss the CIP, we can set up a workshop for that, otherwise, the adoption, once again, can occur at June 6th meeting or the last meeting that's scheduled for the year of June 20th. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Crumpton. Questions for the county manager? Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lavalley?
No questions now.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Reeves?
Did I understand you to say if we came to a mutual agreement that we could adopt both by June 6th?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I lost my screen, come back.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, commissioners.
Historic House Project Administration Contract with Temple's Triangle J Council of Governments. Thank you, Mr. Geraldo.
Yes, sir, good afternoon, I'm recommending the approval of a construction administration contract between Lee County and Triangle J, designed to provide, provide grant administration services for the Emergencies Supplemental Historical Preservation Fund grant that we received to ensure that we remain in compliance with program guidelines and require reporting in the amount of 7.5% of the final approved project budget, but not to exceed $68,204. Again, all I'm asking is for the approval, the signature on the contract, but the $68,204 is actually included in the grant, direct and indirect funding is approved in the grants, so really, it's not the cost, it's just the approval for us to work with Triangle J, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Geraldo?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the recommend of construction administration contract with Triangle J, designed to provide grant administrative services for the Emergencies Supplemental Historic Preservation Fund while ensuring compliance with the program guidelines, required reporting in the amount of 7.5% of the final approval project budget, but not to exceed Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
2011 Tax Bill Write-Off. Mr. Brown?
Good evening, commissioners and staff. Tonight, we come before you requesting permission to write off the 2011 tax bills. These tax bills are, became delinquent September 1st of 2011. We request the authority to write off the delinquent tax bills in the amount of $34,332.45. A detailed list of these accounts have been submitted to the clerk, to the board, and also through your commissioner's website. We appreciate, we request approval for that, sir.
Any questions, Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion to authorize a tax collector to write off the 2011 delinquent tax bills in the amount of $34,332.45 as per North Carolina General Statute 105350, excuse me, 373G and 105378. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. Oh, and just a reminder, for those individuals that are interested in sitting on any board or commission, if you're on this delinquent list, you still are delinquent, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
It doesn't go away.
Doesn't go away, correct, okay, just wanted to make sure. Trying to recruit people for boards and commissions, I know you're all working on it, yes? Next item on the agenda is the board commissioner's summer meeting schedule.
I can take that one. So in years past, the board has typically approved a summer schedule, meeting once a month for the months of July, August, and September. In years past, it has typically taken place on the third Monday of those months, however, in discussions with staff and due to some scheduling conflicts, staff is recommending meeting the second Monday of each month, so that would be July 11th, August 8th, and September 12th, if the board would be inclined to approve those dates for the summer schedule.
Has everybody had a chance to review those possible dates? Commissioner Lovick, questions? Commissioner Reeves?
Still one meeting, right?
One meeting a month on the second Monday of each month for July, August, and September.
Provided we have no hurricanes or any other disasters.
All right, I don't want you pulling my wool over my eyes. I'm good.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, I'm good with that.
Commissioner Lavalley? Commissioner Connect?
It's fine, thank you.
Commissioner? Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been moved to approve the summer scheduled meeting for the second Monday of each month in July. each month in July, August, and September. Seeing there are any other discussion, further questions? Seeing there are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll move on. The item on, next on the agenda is the Lee County Fire Advisory Board. Mayor Andrews has let us know he'll be here by 7 o'clock. He has 10 minutes, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, nonprofits policy.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would just like to open the discussion for our, uh, nonprofit policy and, uh, recommend that we put a cap on our nonprofits at 65,000.
Recommendation is put a cap on the nonprofits to the amount of 65,000? Any discussion? Questions? Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
I'm good.
Commissioner LaValle?
Yep.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver?
I'm just interested where the number came from. What, what were you basing that on?
Um, I think the number was 100. Well, it's been at 100,050, between 50 and 100.
That was on the policy we discussed earlier.
Yeah. The recommended policy had been at 100. We have been funding, uh, between 43,500 and 59,500 over the last few years. If that's what you were asking.
Well, I think it's his, his question, right?
Yeah. I didn't come up with 65,000, so.
Well, we're not including the SAGA.
Hold on. I'm sorry. We have two.
No, you go ahead and Commissioner Connect.
No, I, I'm just saying some of those, some of those numbers you were mentioning were SAGA and other big projects.
Exempted SAGA from that.
Right. I think this is just consistent with what we've done in the past with our, our local charities. I think it's where you came up with that number. It's pretty, pretty close.
Yeah, it did not. I didn't mean to include SAGA in this.
No, no, and you didn't. I don't think you did.
No.
He was just giving the broad number. I think you're just, I think you're just kind of staying the same what we've done in the past with the increase, um, due to everything going up in this world.
Correct.
Commissioner?
Would this now be part of the, uh, policy or would it be included in the policy statement that we're coming out with, or do we know?
I think that's the end.
That was the motion, is to agree to the $65,000 as the cap for the nonprofits.
And I, I will add that, um, at, at any time, the board can, can come back and, and change it if there's an emergency or if, if four people think there needs to be some additional funding for something, you, you can always bring it back to the board.
And that's a clause in our policy.
Okay.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves, did you get?
I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good.
Commissioner LaValle? All right. The motion's been made to cap our 2022, 23 fiscal year budget for nonprofits at $65,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving along.
Let me ask one quick question. Did we include the changes we made earlier during the workshop on the policy?
We made, the only change we made was the 65,000 as a cap.
But at the, the last meeting, uh, the, the sentence I read earlier, the organization will be required to designate a finance officer or treasurer.
Right.
Who will be bonded an amount of $10,000 or an amount equal to the funding from Lee County, whichever is higher.
Right. That's my question. Is it in the policy?
And then you asked that we put in the funding criteria that if they pay property taxes, the property taxes must be current before they get paid.
Right. As a part of the approval.
You want to?
Do you want to make a motion to approve the amended policy that we was presented with earlier? Motion's been made to approve the policy with the amendment to the $65,000 cap in addition to those other changes that were made.
I'd also make a, another thing, let, I'd like to make a, um, change in amendment, let the county staff review any, um, coming things first.
And the amendment's been made to allow the county staff to review and present to the Commissioners their recommendations. Did you get that, Mrs. Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Yes. Are we counting Commissioner Reeves as having made the motion? Or how would you like to proceed in that?
And he made the motion to ensure that the changes to the policy.
And then we had an addition.
And his addition.
So this is an amendment to the original motion. Okay.
He can simply amend the motion and include that.
Yes. That's right. Okay.
So you're amending the motion?
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna vote on the amendment first?
Yes.
Okay. All those, any further discussion on the amendment as presented? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, just let me ask. We're, we're changing the policy, uh, just as a, a way of going about doing business. It seems like now that we've got these changes, it might be worthwhile to just, uh, see what the manager comes up with on the, the statement of the thing. Am I to understand that basically the manager is going to review them correctly and then make a recommendation of, of who should be supported and at what level? Is that what the intention is?
Commissioner?
I'm thinking the county manager and the staff.
The way it's written is county manager and staff. You have it in front of you? I don't. It's in the other sheet. I think, and, and I know this, we went through that drill last Monday with all of the nonprofits, and I believe when we had our earlier discussion that we were not going to do that again. And in order to avoid that, that we take the recommendations from the staff and the county manager on those nonprofits that they deem meets the requirements that we have presented.
And, and generally, I'm in favor of that. That's, that's not the problem. I guess what I'm curious about is the process of changing a policy, and we're debating it back and forth here and then going ahead and, and passing it right away. It just seems like there's not that much urgency for it. Generally, it makes a lot of sense to me, but a policy also talks about the means by which you're going to do this, and I would be really interested to see what the manager has to say about how he's gonna accomplish it. No doubt, he probably will do it. I'm in favor of it. I just, as a matter of course, it seems like we ought to see it before, uh, before we vote on it.
See exactly, what, what is it you wish to exactly see? The complete policy or the amendment?
Yeah, what the policy says. But.
It would be what we've done in the past.
Well, I put, I just typed real quick. The eligible applicants will be reviewed by the county manager and his designees. The manager will, will be making the recommendation for funding based on the policy.
Right.
Is it possible to include, uh, some community involvement and such things like that?
We had that.
That wasn't in the policy, though. People that are making the, uh, the review are all the staff. All I'm asking is to include community representatives that he can choose to include in that discussion with the staff.
I think that's where we get right back into the, uh, marathon that we might've got into last Monday.
Right.
Just my fault.
Well, that's what it does.
I request to make an amendment that includes.
Well, we're still on, we have an open amendment at the moment.
Got you.
So all those in favor of the amendment proposed by Commissioner Connect, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Your amendment, sir.
Thank you. I just wish to amend that we would include community involvement in, uh, the, the recommendation that the manager makes for nonprofit, uh, support. It just supports the whole idea of transparency and, um, including people who are intimately familiar with it. It will not require the, uh, the, uh, manager to have 19 people come before him and talk.
And when you say community involvement, do you mean just people in the community or people that represent the nonprofits?
That's a really good question. I think I would leave it up to him, but the, the, the bottom line is that the activity that we're talking about, uh, I would suggest is not generally understood or known by everybody. Uh, it's not the county's responsibility, and that's probably why the county manager has been not really interested in getting involved in it. But, uh, it seems like going out and just asking some people who are in the know, I, I have a list on my mind, but, but people that you might select from so that you have insight on what, on, on the choices you're making.
I, I, but general fund, I think county manager as a whole has a, has a good thumb on, on the pulse of it, but he, he, he does call on people when he has issues or concerns. I think he does that on his own accord. I don't think he, I'm worried that he doesn't do that already. If he has a question on something or merit on something, I mean, he, he's already got sources that he calls on a continuous basis, in my, in my, my opinion.
I would also imagine that the application itself includes information about what the nonprofit does and how it would utilize the funds and, and include all of that.
He's open to call anybody he likes. I'm sure he has, has a broad network to do so.
And I mean, I think that having this as our policy doesn't mean that we can't still discuss it when the nonprofit piece comes up. I, I just don't understand how we would implement community input in the county budget, aside from having the representative of the nonprofit presenting.
I understand.
Commissioner Lovick? Comment?
Just kind of piggyback, it'd be tough to get somebody involved in the community that doesn't have some type of ties with different organizations that come before us to present. It'd be tough to find somebody that's not involved in some type of nonprofit, that is not a community servant out there somewhere.
Listening to the discussion, I withdraw my, uh, request to amend.
Okay. So duly noted. All right, going back to the original.
I think we don't know one already.
Well, the original motion is going back to what Commissioner Reeves had made in accepting the modified, realigned nonprofit policy of the Lee County Board of Commissioners. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mayor Andrews has come in, so we are ready, sir. Good to see you. Hopefully the weather's not bad out there. No fire calls out while we were, we've been here since 4 o'clock.
No, just north of us is the weather. We, as normal, either goes below us or above us, it seems like, so.
That's a good thing, except for the farmers.
Apologize for not being here when you got to this. Uh, was expecting it to take a little bit longer.
No problem, sir.
Chairman Smith, Commissioners, um, I come before you this evening on behalf of the Lee County Fire Advisory Board to present the recommendations for the Lee County Fire Departments and their fiscal year 22, 23 budget requests. The recommendations and supporting documents were part of your agenda packet. As is part of our process, we completed the review of the budget requests from the fire departments. The Fire Advisory Board met with representatives from each fire department to answer questions, discuss concerns, and review the data. Based on those discussions and the budget requests submitted, the Fire Advisory Board made the following recommendations. And I'll just kind of hit the highlights of each department. Tranway Fire Department is requesting an increase in their budget of $26,308. The department is increasing personnel costs by $19,033, which includes a 2.5% cost of the living adjustment. And they're also increasing their part-time salaries by $10,000 to increase daytime coverage. Um, they have a goal of finding a cover from 8 to 5, 7 days a week is what they're trying to work towards. Tranway's Fire District's tax base grew by about 33 million. The growth in the tax base and utilizing 5,000 of their fund balance would cover enough, um, for the budget increase to maintain their rate of 9.6 cents. Deep River Fire Department has a budget increase of $25,942 over the current budget. Department has increased cost of personnel by $17,660. Uh, this includes a 3% cost of living adjustment, plus increase in part-time hours to 40 hours a week. The Deep River Fire District tax base increased by $36 million. Deep River Fire Department's budget requests will maintain their current tax rate of 11.5 cents.
Can I, can I review one second?
Yes, sir.
Does the individual fire department set its own rate for personnel?
Yes, sir.
So there's not?
There's no, um, commonality. Each one's their own individual entity and does their own pay for full-time or part-time.
Has the Fire Advisory Board talked about that?
There was conversations a while back, but didn't really ever gain any traction because you're dealing with seven individual departments and.
I got you.
Each had their own budget and trying to cover.
Each has their own board.
Yeah, okay.
But you'll see throughout my presentation, most of them are increasing, uh, either through a cost of living or I'm increasing the starting salary to be competitive. So, but yeah, there's no requirement that they all offer the same, but I think they're, they're seeing that they've got to raise their part-time hours to maintain, um, the cost of living is usually for their full-time or the 40-hour-a-week people.
And you, you know, I've been involved in too, but for one department to make this and then you, you don't feel quite as proud, I'm not at this station that makes, you know where I'm coming from.
I understand. And I think they do, they understand that too. It's just each one's trying to make their budget and not, haha, putting a more burden on the taxpayer than they're, they're have, they have to. So they're trying to work within their means.
So does this give more talk to the flat rate?
Could, can I ask?
I can't ask that, answer that question.
Let, let's finish with, uh, Mayor Andrews' presentation, and we'll hold questions to the end.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, Cape Fear Fire Department budget request shows an increase of $34,120. Uh, the department is increasing the cost of personnel, uh, by $6,620. They're increasing their starting pay for part-time to $15 an hour. So that's, that's where that's coming from. Um, there are other, uh, increases. We're on building maintenance and some fleet maintenance. Cape Fear's unique, as I'll remind you, Cape Fear and Clearwater Forest, uh, tax base, um, cause Cape Fear services the Clearwater Forest, uh, Fire District, their combined tax base increased by 32 million over the current year. With the increase, uh, in the tax base, they will maintain their 12.1 cent fire tax rate. Norfolk Fire Department has requested a budget increase of $17,507 over the current year. Uh, most of that increase is in their, uh, accounting. They're transitioning from in-house, uh, to using an accounting service to pay all their payroll and invoices. Um, they're looking down the road at a change in, in the person that's doing that, so they're trying to take the steps now to, to address that and make that a smooth trans, transaction or transition, excuse me. Um, they've also requested $350,000 out of their fund balance to begin construction of sleeping quarters and restrooms to accommodate the transition to a 24-hour service. Um, as part of the projected cost, um, yeah, they gotta get it sprinkled and they're adding on to the back of the building. Their tax base grew by $64 million. Uh, the tax base growth more than offsets the increase in the budget, plus the use of $350,000 from their fund balance to maintain their current rate of 8 cents. Lemon Springs Fire Department requested a budget increase of $12,850. Their department is increasing salaries, uh, for their part-time people to $15 an hour. Um, the increase will allow them to compete with, uh, surrounding departments. They border Moore County and Harnett County, so kind of back to what you were talking about. So they're trying to compete with them. Uh, Lemon Springs Fire District grew by $21 million, um, so that more than offsets their increase in their budget to maintain their tax rate of 9.6. Carolina Trace Fire Department requesting $40,135, uh, in their budget for the upcoming year. $29,735 of that is in personnel, uh, 2% cost of living, and they are converting a part-time position to a full-time position. Um, they're, you know, again, trying to cover that, um, 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night time period. They're also have added offering physicals, uh, to their members, uh, on an annual base. Their tax base increased by 9 million. They had a projected fund balance of 25,000. The increase in budget, um, was more than the tax base and the use of the 25,000 fund balance could absorb. So they came back. If they didn't make any changes, their rate would be 11.7 compared to the 11.5, but they came back and cut $10,000 out of their budget to maintain that 11.5 tax rate. Chief Myers and their board, uh, Chief Myers and their board decided that they would trim some, some items back to keep the tax rate. Pocket Fire Department is requesting a budget increase of $29,000. The biggest change in their budget's $91,000 increase in operations, and they're also increased their capital reserve by $20,000. They're once again trying for a FEMA grant to replace their aging self-contained breathing apparatus. You know, it's one of those things, you keep applying, keep applying, and hope you get it, but they're trying to set money aside because at some point they will have to replace those, the age of those air packs are running out. Their Fire District tax base grew by about $7 million. With the growth in the tax base and using $43,000 of their fund balance, they will maintain their tax rate of 14.5 cents. So as you'll note, all seven fire departments will maintain their current tax rate, so there's no change in the tax rate. One of the things that did come up as part of our discussion with them, all of them are working with first-help EMS to enhance the level of service that the first responders are providing. And if you, you know, when we went through their budget, we saw an increase for the initial purchase of some equipment in order to assist first help in enhancing that level of service. The budget recommendations for the fire department were based on the information that was available in our discussions with the representatives from the fire department. The cost of personnel continued to go up, equipment replacement on trucks, along with operating costs. One of our concerns that we addressed with each one of them was fuel costs. Each one of them had adjusted it for the most part, but it's still, yeah, diesel's $5.35, 40 cents right now, so they all felt like they were in a, in a good position, so hopefully we'll see some relief in the coming months. We were fortunate this year as the county continues to see strong growth in the tax base, so that allowed the, the departments to have a little bit of increase but maintain the same fire tax rate. And I, I know I say this every year when I get up here, but the citizens of Lee County are fortunate that we have volunteer fire departments. They provide an invaluable service both to their local community, but also to the, the county as a whole. And just, again, take this opportunity to thank them for their service and their dedication to getting up in the middle of the night, answering a call, whether it's their neighbor or family member or a complete stranger. They're there, so we're fortunate to have men and women who are willing to, to put the time and effort in to become certified firefighters and, and answer that call. Thank you for your, your time, and I'll try to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mayor Andrews, and we appreciate the efforts and the work you do. Okay, questions? Commissioner Carver?
I'm just curious about fund balance. Are there any requirements on fund balance like there are for the county as a general?
No, sir.
Do they answer that?
No, they're not.
Lisa's shaking her head no.
Yeah. I mean, it's just accumulated funds that, you know, where someone pays.
Right. So we have to budget off this amount of tax base, and so from year to year, they may over-collect, they may under-collect. And so when we reach their budget that you approve, we hold their funds until the next fiscal year. That's considered their fund balance, and so if the next fiscal year they don't end up then using it, it's solely cumulative. And that consists, we typically don't lower their rates. Some of them, like Northview, have accumulated quite a bit of funds with the growth that there's been in the industrial base at Northview. So that's the fund balance, so there are no restrictions like we, no recommendations like there is with the general public.
So one of the things we've encouraged them to do is one-time expense, like two years ago, Northview, I mean, Lemon Springs bought air packs. It's a one-time expense. Northview is adding on to the station, and they're funding, you know, $350,000 to do that, so that's one of the things. Some of them that have been more fortunate than other departments have been in a position where they can take advantage of that. Some of the other departments has helped maintain their tax rate, as we saw with Tramway, Pocket used quite a bit of their fund balance to maintain their rate, but also increased their, their operating costs. Trace used all of theirs and still had to come back and trim to maintain that 11.5. So, and it varies from, you know, every year how it, you purchases new homes, parts of the county are growing faster than others, as, as we can see with the growth at Northview compared to the growth at Pocket.
Good answers, thank you.
Commissioner, connect.
Now, we, we've got some ambulances stationed out in the county. How's our response times and is the community being better served?
I don't know how the response time, that's not, doesn't come in front of the Fire Advisory Board, but what I'm hearing from the fire departments, it's been a great partnership. I know with Trace and Northview have, both have made arrangements where they may have daytime folks there or parking ambulance there. So what I'm hearing is a good partnership. That's, you know, as far as that response time, I'm gonna have to defer to someone who is more familiar with the EMS. I would imagine it has to be better because they're closer to where some of the call volume was. I know, quick conversation with Tim Simmons, there's still a challenge filling spots. They, I know when we met back in the late fall, early winter, he was still trying to get enough people to fill all the spots to, you know, provide the number of trucks he wanted, so I haven't talked to him since. But what I'm hearing from the fire departments, it's going well, and this level of enhanced service, I think, will be another plus where, you know, the fire departments get there quicker, especially, you know, like Cape Fear, a truck responding from Sanford or Carolina Trace to the backside of Buckhorn, that's a good little, a ride for an EMS unit, whereas the fire department gets there a little bit sooner, and we'll be able to offer a few things that, you know, right now we just do cardiac arrests or respiratory arrests, do CPR and give them oxygen, but if we're able to add to the type of calls we can respond to, I think that's another value to the citizens, a quicker, quicker response time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovell?
No question.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Reeves, questions?
Yes, sir. Who pays for the audits of the fire department?
They do.
Okay. And are you having any trouble securing volunteers now?
So we asked that question, and for the most part, there hasn't been a big change in membership due to COVID. Few departments, when COVID was full-blown, they kind of relaxed some of the training rules, but now everybody's kind of back to doing the in-person training. For the most part, everybody has maintained. Pocket Fire Department actually had an increase in membership out there, which is encouraging, but if you're looking at the trend, it's been fairly steady, other than we lost a few with the COVID, either, you know, just didn't come back when the training requirements started being back in person, or they aged out, or, you know. One of the challenges is just getting people involved. All of them are trying to do some at some level, either community outreach, I know Tramway, Cheekdale, they're doing National Night Out, they're doing stuff at the local churches to try to do stuff. Lemon Springs is very active in their community to get folks involved, so some, several of them have junior firefighter programs. But if you look at the numbers, they're, they're all in the 30s, 35 range, so it's just, yeah, it's, it's a constant challenge with volunteer service throughout any, anything, just getting folks because of the number of hours, the training hours.
Well, I listen to the news regularly, and I hear that as a concern around other counties, and I'm just curious about our county. The other question I have is on the training cost. I've heard numerous complaints about what it costs for the equipment or training. It seems to be coming as a result of the state requirements more than anything.
So state has increased requirements. We try to utilize Central Carolina Community College as much as possible for the, the basic stuff, depending on, you know, what you're trying to get, if you're just like an officer, Level 1 or Level 2, you may have to go, depending on where the class is, you may have to go to Sand Hills or Wake Tech to get that, so there's some costs in that, travel costs and, and, you know, books and stuff.
Right.
So that's, it, like I say, most of the departments try to utilize CCCC because it's an asset right here in our own community, and they're great to work, and they work with the local fire departments. And I know the fire departments, back in April, had a combined mutual aid training out there, working together, so, but yes, it, it's, you know, the requirements are getting more and more to, to satisfy what the state wants us to do, the manpower. One of the fortunate things about having the daytime paid help, that's taking some of the pressure off, because you got the mutual aid, so if there's a call at Northview, you know, Deep River, Cape Fear, Tramway are responding, vice versa, so that, that helps with all these departments having daytime people, but it, yeah, it comes at an expense because we're paying those folks, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick, any other questions?
Just a few comments. It's one of the best deals we got going. I've been there, done that. They think restaurants is bad with no staff. If these guys and gals decided to, all of a sudden, didn't feel like their services was needed, they would really feel a pinch, and most of these, the self-daytime personnel stuff are not paid people, and a lot of people don't realize that, so this is a county, it's, I, I remember when we used to sell barbecue plates and stuff to buy used equipment, so it's come a long ways, and whatever we need to do to keep these people coming in and trained, I mean, it's way cheaper than we could have, you know, i- if we actually had to pay all these people, you think EMS is having trouble with the services, we, we couldn't?
Well, Lee County's fortunate when they implemented the fire tax, that took a lot of the pressure off, because if you talk to rural fire departments down east, that's still, they're operating off of the barbecue plate and chicken bogs, the, yeah, yeah, unfortunately, a fire truck now, you know, is $600,000, $700,000 if you're lucky.
Yeah, but, you know, adding on with EMS stuff, you know, used to, back in the day, they didn't respond, but helping, having those emergency services on site, like you said, so much quicker is such a big plus for our county, and sometimes that's the first ones on, a lot of times, it's first ones on the scene, at least they have somebody there that feel like to get some type of care.
Like I said, we're fortunately counted because between the Sheriff's Department, Police Department, EMS, and fire departments, there's great relationships from the top all the way through, and that, everybody works together, right, everybody's brothers and sisters when that pager goes off or that call comes in, so.
So any more discussion on the flat rate?
I haven't been involved in the flat rate, so I missed that meeting, so I'm gonna have to defer to Chairman Smith and Manager Crump, and I think they were involved in that conversation. I know it come up at the Fire Advisory Board meeting, and the response, I think, was pretty much consistent. They hadn't talked to the boards. There's, there was more questions than there were answers about how it would be set up, how it would be implemented.
Like it's always been.
Like it's always been, yes, sir.
Some of the comments were, well, it'd be good for some and bad for others.
Sure.
And that was consistent with all seven fire departments.
Well, you're, you're trying, the, the purpose of a flat tax would be to create, create equality, and with what's going on with the city annexation right now, you know, to Deep River specifically, if you just took them as an example, it's also affected Cape Fear as well, you know, you, you don't know what their tax base is going to be year to year based on that, on their annexation, nor do you know, understand where their territory is. So right now, if you took a look at the city's annexation map, which Don was still here, he called it the Caribbean, because you have islands all over the place and then spaces of water in between everything. That's what the city looks like northwest of city proper. So how do you, how do you create fairness for those fire departments, and more, more importantly, how do you create a standard of service to your citizens when you're, you're on, you're dealing with checkered board here? It's very difficult from a planning standpoint, it's, it's the same thing we discussed it earlier with the solid waste system. We, we're, we're starting to have service issues not of our own doing, let's, let's put it that way. So now we have to figure out a way to fix those problems, and, you know, you, Deep River's still got to provide service up there, but their, their, their tax base is being eroded. So what do you, how do you do that? And how do you do it fairly and equitably to everybody? So that, that's what the flat tax is, is, is there for, and you, and you're not basing their budget off of what their tax base is, you're basing their budget off of what their needs are. So it's a completely change of thought process, but, you know, everybody's been doing it this way for a long time, and it's, but, you know, it's like I said, you know, our, our, our situations are changing, I wish the sheriff was, the chief deputy was still here, could talk to him about some issues that have gone on with service, you know, where city police, thank God, they both show up at the same time, you know, that, and we don't have, not having a situation where nobody shows up. But it is a problem, and somehow, some way, we're going to have to address it with the city and what's going on.
I think the biggest thing I took from the meeting the other night when we had with the fire chiefs and representatives, they just want more information. It's hard to make a yea or nay, not knowing how it's going to be set up and how it would operate, because it is totally different. We've been doing it this way now since 2006, where we kind of, you know, balance the fire department operation and the tax base, and, you know, they, the majority of them tried to maintain that tax base and, and fight. I mean, I can think of two fire departments that fight it to the very end, and finally they'll, they'll, they'll like, okay, we'll increase our tax rate, but I mean, they, you know, need to replace the equipment, and as you saw when I was reading through, some of them are hoping they're gonna get this FEMA grant, and, yeah, that's one of those things that would, I mean, I can speak for Cape Fear, two years ago, we tried for three years to get a FEMA grant for air packs. Applied every year, the third year, we made it all the way to October, and then got the notice that we were no longer in the running for FEMA money, but fortunately, we had set enough money aside every year to buy new air bottles. Didn't solve our air pack problem, but the bottles have a shorter life than the packs do, and they're not cheap. I mean, you're looking at about $7,000, $8,000 for a pack. So it, it's, it's a challenge for the departments who aren't seeing the growth that some of the other departments are seeing, so. And I think the more information that you can provide them, then they'll be able to kind of, you get a better feeling. The last time fire, flat tax came up, it, it wasn't received well, but it's the same questions that exist today that exist back then, is how's it going to be set up and how we're going to manage it, and how we're going to fund everybody. Because you're right, you get a good deal with the seven fire departments, we've got and the equipment they've got in there and how they chase grants and.
And the fire ratings that they've achieved.
Fire ratings, I mean, yeah.
They've saved our citizens big money on, on hazard insurance.
So, I mean, we, we went from, you know, having territories that were rated a 10, to pretty much everybody's now.
Yeah, four.
Four, so, I mean, and that's hard work. That's a lot of paperwork, a lot of man-hours, a lot of mutual aid training to get that, and it's, once you get it, you're not done. That's an ongoing thing, and, you know, and the state comes quite often to make sure you're still doing what you said you were doing.
Still volunteers.
Still volunteers, the majority of them are volunteers.
Madam Clerk, there's no need for us to vote on accepting this, this is just included in our budget.
A public hearing will be held on June 6.
Public hearing is, okay. Do you need a motion for the public hearing for the Fire Advisory Board?
I don't, it's just part of the process.
Okay, it's part of the final, okay. Mayor, Mayor Andrews, just want to say thank you.
Yes, sir.
And, and I want to say thank you, Lisa, because when we sit in the Fire Advisory Boards at budget time, he has the magic numbers provided by you and your staff, and it's amazing how those numbers come out, and we appreciate it very much, so thank you.
She's on, she's on speed dial, I just know when it, when the machine answers, they hit four. And hope she answers, and, you know, like, uh, as soon as she hears my voice, she's like, oh no, is that time again? It comes too quick, I'm afraid.
I know, it's a big race on the start.
Thank you, Mayor Andrews, and my apologies to your commission, because I will be sitting in a budget session next Monday, so I'll be missing your board meeting.
Oh, you'll miss out on the chickens.
I apologize. Moving on to the managers' report.
Good evening. You have, you should have in your agenda package the April financial report. As always, you know, remember, please remember that sales tax runs, can't talk now, runs three months behind. Tax collections as a percentage of budget through April are just 0.09% behind the same time period last year. In reviewing expenditures, we should be around 83.33%. At this time, overall, we only have one department that is exceeding that, and that's the juvenile detention. And as I told you last month, we are seeing an uptick in the number of youth being held in detention, so we'll be bringing a budget amendment to you next month to get us through the end of the year with that cost. That's one of those things we have no choice in. Um, that's one of those things we have no choice in. Um, so, I will bring that to you. You also have the sales tax reports through February of 2022, and we continue to be right around 14% in our growth, both, um, for our taxes and countywide. We're seeing about the same amount of growth. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Lisa?
No.
And again, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. And I have to also give credit, Mr. Brown, because he starts off with giving me the tax bases.
Oh, I apologize, Mr. Brown. You're the one who gives her the, okay, yes, sir. Thank you for helping the fire departments.
I play with the, I play with the fun balance and give them those, but I have to start off with the tax bases from him.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're up, John.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'll start with the Moore Training Facility. Um, we met with, uh, Representative Robert Reeves and, uh, county staff and our environmental engineers, Tara Quest, at DEQ in Raleigh on May 3rd. Had a great meeting with them. The purpose of meeting was to review the proposed work plan addressing the removal of the hazardous waste permit from the site and understanding what we needed to do to, uh, get a letter that's called, uh, no further action. And so, um, we went through all that. Um, we believe we're getting close to getting approval of our plan, which at that point, um, they see no issues with us, uh, as long as remediation starts with, you know, things beginning to start happening there. So, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll get that letter and, um, the real work to remediate will start. The multi-sports complex, at the last Commissioner's meeting, Plan C with modifications for the access road and playground were approved by the Commissioners. Uh, Plan C2 was therefore developed and, uh, is actually before the city's technical review committee at the end of the month and, uh, for initial review. I sat in on a meeting today and, uh, the plans look really good. The library building project, conceptual design, uh, work continues along with site selection. Um, some certain sites were shown to the Board of Trustees this week, um, or last week, excuse me. And, uh, I think they made approval of what their desired site would be. We're now working with the architect and our, uh, CM at risk, uh, to discuss, um, whether, which site would be the most cost effective for us. So, I think the site that the library Board of Trustees approved and what's gonna end up being the site, um, will be the same site. So, the courthouse government center projects are winding down. The courthouse project is basically complete. Just some small, um, security issues as we're dealing with some equipment, um, you know, that's being installed. I would tell you that, uh, we're about finished in the parking lot there and hopefully that will come to an end. You heard a little bit about the historic courthouse renovation project, uh, with the approval that y'all made tonight. That project is about to get going, uh, with us hopefully hiring an, uh, architect pretty soon. Parking lot projects, uh, still waiting on lights. So, to finish those up, uh, would give you a timeline, but I'd be wrong. So, won't give you one. Uh, the Horton Pool, uh, the supply chain issues are starting to clear up and the ARPA issues, uh, uh, we've worked through. So, on Friday, they had their construction kickoff meeting and by the end of the mon- month, they should be mobilizing the workforce on site. So, looking forward to starting to see some work on the pool there. Hale Center, we're looking for the, um, HVAC system to be out to bids within 30 days. And, uh, COVID-19 update, we had 29 confirmed cases over the weekend, according to the Health Director. Um, we had a large number of employees, not as large as the city. Um, the, the entire, uh, third floor, which is actually the second floor, but we'll just call it the planning zoning floor, GIS floor, um, just about the entire floor was home. As a matter of fact, nobody in planning was there for three days, um, due to the COVID and happened to be, uh, testing positive and happened to be quarantined for a couple of days, five days to be exact. So, I believe that is my report. Oh, I'll cover the EMS question. Um, we did review, um, the first quarter report with First Health and, uh, the response times are better, but not drastically better. And the main issue still is the, uh, wait times at the hospital. And, you know, we're believing a lot of that has to do with volume for our calls and volume in the hospital. So, not real sure what's going on there. Um, but, uh, both EMS and the hospital are seeing more cases than normal right now and it's not COVID related. So, anyway, we're, um, the EMS folks spend a lot of time there. But when they are there at, uh, Northview and at, uh.
Trace.
Uh, Carolina Trace, their response times there are excellent inside the gate and out to Deep River. So, um, hopefully that will take care of itself as hopefully the, the staffing issues will work themselves out at the hospital and EMS as well. That's my report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the manager? Commissioner Lovick?
No, sir, I'm busy.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No, sir.
Commissioner LaValle? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner, everybody shaking their head? Okay. Uh, Commissioner Comments? Start with you, Commissioner Carver.
Um, I just wanna share that I had a chance to do a, a course with UNC SOG School of Government that had to do with fiduciary responsibility. And the thing that was amazing is I was sitting there and they were enumerating the number of problems that some of the counties have. Uh, every, everything that they were listing down, I could remember something that, uh, Lisa Minter told us in a meeting, whatever, that mitigated that. And it was really remarkable. I, I just really appreciate the attention to detail that they have, plus the time that they spent educating me. Anyway, uh, the other thing I would say is that when I was going over the budget, I just really felt like, um, uh, we're blessed. I, I cannot imagine if we didn't have this kind of, uh, expansion going on in economic development in the county, what would we do with all the requirements that we have? Now, obviously, some of the economic development and the growth is driving this, but take yourself to another county that's not nearly as, uh, wealthy as we are, I can't imagine how they're trying to survive. Uh, if you think of the environment with the, uh, inflation that we're facing and the COLAs, those kinds of things, I don't know where they're coming up with money. And I know, looking at some of the, uh, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners stuff, there are a lot of people out there wringing their hands. So, I'm thankful to be on this board and have the support that we have. That's all I have.
Commissioner Connect?
I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner LaValle?
Yes. Just wanted to remind everyone that, um, this Thursday, May 19th, at 5:30 PM at the Government Center, we'll be having the mural dedication for Dr. Mary Margaret McLeod. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, where it pertains to, uh, nonprofits, um, I know some wanted a lower cap, some wanted a higher cap, um, but just glad that we could, uh, compromise, uh, because the nonprofits do, uh, provide a vital role in the county. And, um, just glad we could get that worked out.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, Commissioner Reeves?
Yeah, I would like the board to seriously consider moratorium on some of the growth that has taken place. You know, it's going at such a pace. Uh, this is something I've been working with, with Don. I know you don't have a copy, but what it shows you is where all these developments are gonna be, these little circle areas. I asked him to go back and, and indicate what part of the county they're located by street or something so that you could quickly know exactly where, where it's going. We got a couple of 900, 893, 990. These are large products, projects. And the greatest fear I have is, at the pace that we're going, we have the potential of running our staff off. You know, you can't just keep driving people and driving people. They have to have some relief and some help. And I think a moratorium may be the very thing. I'm all for smart growth, but you can't take it all day, all the time, every day of the week. So, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lovick?
Uh, yes, just a quick report on the Department of Health Social Services Board that I'm on. They went through an audit process and I think I reported earlier a couple of months ago how good they really did. Um, they got a couple of concerns and with our staff being so, uh, many years experienced, had to actually tell the auditors how things were, how they were really supposed to go. So, it speaks volumes for our, our longevity of our employees in that, uh, certain, Department of Social Services. And, um, it passed with 96%. And it was unheard of. 72% of the counties were failing. So, with that being that higher rating, it speaks volumes of our, uh, that we're taking ca- care of in our county. And today's my anniversary and I have to tell my wife anniversary, happy anniversary. So, can't leave that out. Thank you.
You're coming up with number 45, right?
Oh, I would, I'm not there yet.
[laughing]
Stop. Um, Commissioner Reeves was very salient in that point. The only thing is, Commissioner Reeves, it, it has to do with the city. And when the city annexes and then they do the expansion, we have no control over that because I get the phone calls from the Deep River folks and they're up in arms and upset that, you know, the city's annexing everything. That's what it is. And I, you're, you are right. We are going to put a strain on our system. Um, that's why we have to hire more people. Um, I do have a letter from Eldon Sloan, Dr. Sloan out of Broadway. And he writes, Dear Chairman Smith, I am the Chair of the North Carolina Veterans Memorial Committee and Project Director of our Building Committee. The Committee is in the process of building the North Carolina Disabled Veterans Monument in Broadway. The exterior is almost finished and we are beginning to finish the interior and the exterior hardscaping. This will be an official North Carolina monument. Most of the money for construction has been provided by grants from our state legislature. For the past two years, the Lee County Veterans Council has requested and you have granted $10,000 to help us with construction costs. It has been invaluable and we are very grateful for this. This year, they have applied again and we have specific construction costs which we will use this money. This year, we are asking, as the North Carolina Veterans Memorial Committee, with the approval of the Lee County Veterans Council, at this delayed date, to double the amount requested this year to $20,000. Since the application date is passed, I know, I don't know if we can do this, but we are hoping an amendment of the dollar amount of the Lee County Veterans Council grant application will be allowed. We have a donation which gives us the ability to place a handicap parking lot besides our monument, but we must have a ramp to get us from the parking area up to the walkway in front of the monument. For this, we need an additional $10,000. Having a handicap parking area beside the monument was not in our original plan or budget. However, I recently paced off the distance from the front door of the monument to the nearest parking and it was 67 yards. That's two-thirds the length of a football field. That's too far for a monument for disabled veterans. Within the last week, Patterson Paving Company donated the materials and labor for the parking area. In addition to the paving, they called a striping company and they agreed to paint the spaces and provide the handicap signs at no charge. We do not have the money to build this ramp, but with these funds, we can begin building both the parking area and the ramp immediately. The ramp is a brick structure with an integrated retaining wall and the cost for this is $9,960, very close to the additional $10,000 we are requesting. I hope that you will see this as a necessary use of the money and an appropriate investment in Lee County. Sincerely, Eldon Sloan, Jr., Chair of the North Carolina Veterans Memorial And as a side note, unfortunately, John Sandrock, our former Veteran Service Officer, uh, passed away last weekend. And John Sandrock had been, uh, a noted individual on the Veterans Council, uh, very much in tune with his county, serving veterans within Lee County area as well as Harnett County. And I just wanted to share that in the passing, um, in remembrance of him, uh, giving that to his wife as, as a sincere loss to our county as well, her, his family. Um, any, any questions, any comments?
Well, Mr. Chairman, with that being said, um, I would just make a motion that we, um, give them the money that they need to finish the project and, uh, maybe since this is a North Carolina memorial, we, we solicit, um, contributions from other counties as well.
And the amount on that?
Well, I think he was asking 10 and an additional 10 seems to be 20. So, I, I would, I would make the motion for that amount.
Motion's been.
Make it and it'll be a final, a final, um, donation to the project.
The motion's been made to provide the Veterans Council, the Lee, excuse me, the North Carolina Disabled American Veterans Memorial, the amount of $20,000 as a final ask. And would you be so kind to amend it in honor of the, uh, former John Sandrock? So, move it, Mr. Chair.
And also the letters out to the state.
And also, yeah, and as well as, we will send letters to all 99 counties to solicit from them to recoup some of the expenses, uh, on behalf of the North Carolina Disabled Amer- American Veterans Memorial. Any discussion, any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, continuing with Commissioner Comments, I will be, uh, absent on Friday for the budget meeting at 09. And I've asked graciously the Vice Chair if she would fill in for me. Uh, we will be celebrating our 45th anniversary in the mountains this week. Uh, we leave Tuesday, Wednesday morning. So, um, I do commend my wife for tolerating 20 years in the military. And, well, goodness gracious, it's been almost that many years after we got out. So, anyway, it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Motion's been made to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Thank you very much.